Our one to M Unlimited Manufacturing District with approved annexation and erect the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next items, items to be concerned at future meetings, changes to the ZBA procedures, rental housing program implementation with policies and procedures, overcrowding report update and zoning text amendment. Any additional items anybody would like to add? Hearing none, make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to add that we look at in the future, any future developments of more than two homes and properties, that we have the sites shot. I don't know if that makes any sense, okay? But currently what happens is like we've, when we have a development come into town, we, we have, what happens is we get the plans from that developer and that developer's engineer, and then our engineer actually just reviews the plan, so all they're doing is looking at the numbers. They're not actually going out and shooting the site. And what I would like to see is for us to incorporate having our engineer, whether it be in-house or our hired engineer, go out and shoot that site to make sure that it actually is what they say it is in those plans, because we're running into a problem where it's not necessarily, that's not necessarily what's happening. So I'd like to have that on for discussion.
Mr. Noak can only...
You know what I'm talking about, Roger? John knows what I'm talking about.
I think you're referring to the Florina Court situation with the...
Yes.
Yes, well, Alderman Toleme is referring to having someone verify the grades and...
Talking about all future developments like that. We should do it to all of them. And incorporate it as part of the process, because, you know, it's, it's, for, for our engineer, we, you know, we can, we can sit up here and we can criticize them, but when we criticize them, they're going based off of, solely off of the plans that they're given. And what I want to see happen in the future is that we actually have them go out and shoot the sites, because when you look at a parcel of property that says it's seven hundred and five feet here in elevation, maybe the back part of it's only six seventy-five, okay? And what happens then is that the whole building ends up getting skewed, and I will tell you very nicely, if you get a chance, go look at the new homes that are going on Florina Court. Specifically, the foundation is going up on, already in the ground. Take a walk to the back of the property and look, and you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. But I think that we need to have the elevation shut, so I would like to have that for discussion at least. Sooner the better.
With your permission, Building Safety Division, our city engineer, as well as Venice, might get together to come up with a type, typical type of format for how to address that, and I think it's, uh, it would be fine.
I mean, if nobody's opposed, because I think that would work well.
Okay, any other additions? If not, make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Opposed? Good, we stand adjourned.
I'm calling to order the Finance and Administration Committee meeting. Will the minute taker please reflect the same members present? First item, approval of minutes dated September fourteenth, two thousand and six. I make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item, report and recommendation on the proposed investment mix. This is a continuation of our earlier discussions on how to distribute our funds and investments. And with that, there is a distribution enclosed in our packet which states how, how our interim finance director is suggesting we go about that. And with that being said, I'll ask if there's any questions, comments on it, or if our interim finance director wishes to add anything at this time, add any comments.
I believe you all had an opportunity to review the information from the Illinois Metropolitan Investment Trust. That is another pooled type of arrangement for Illinois municipal governments and other, other governments. It's collateralized funds. It allows us not to lose interest if we need to move funds between banks for a cash shortage purpose. It's, it is a nice addition to the Illinois funds, which is the Illinois Treasurer's pool. And then finally, it will work well with what we're proposing to do with the other banks, Itasca Bank, Parkway, Suburban, Charter One and Bank of Commerce. We have been soliciting CD rates, and of course, those, those chains. So we will, until we have approval, we won't go ahead and purchase the CDs. But I believe this mix is, is a good way for us to maximize the investment income for the city, and at the same time, give us enough flexibility so that when we need funding for a particular item, we can do so without losing any investment income.
Thank you. Then what I'm gonna go ahead and do, I'm gonna make the motion to, motion that the Finance Committee direct that a resolution approving and authorizing participation in the Illinois Metropolitan Investment Trust be placed on the October nineteenth, two thousand and six city council agenda, and that the interim finance director be directed to obtain certificate of deposit rates from Parkway Bank, Suburban Bank, Charter One Bank and Bank of Commerce, and pledges of collateral from these same banks if the rates obtained are competitive, that four short-term certificates of deposit be purchased at the foregoing banks in the amount of five hundred thousand each, and that an investment in the amount of three million dollars be made in the Illinois Metropolitan Investment Trust Convenience Fund once the resolution is passed. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is report and recommendation on the Wooddale Tax Consortium, and a report was included in our packets. I do agree that we should contribute to this consortium. It, it has proved to be helpful, and so with that being said, I am going to make the motion that we do participate for the two thousand and sixth year, although I would encourage the, the group that meets intergovernmentally to, to review the attorney fees that it, it looks like over the course of two, three years that they have gone up quite a bit. However, it's still, this is still something we should do, but, but I would encourage them to, to look into the fees and, and ensure that we're being charged accordingly. So I'm gonna go ahead and, I'll make the motion, look for a second, and then I'll call the question, and we can have the discussion. I'm going to make a motion to approve payment for the city to participate in the Wooddale Tax Consortium for two thousand and six in the amount of not to exceed six hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? Alderman Suback?
We have been part of this group for a, a long time. I think the fees have gone up because the amount of assessed value that was recouped on behalf of the group had increased. I was a little bit disturbed of how we were part of this consortium, and all of a sudden we got out of it not by a council direction. I don't know if, it wasn't something that came in, on the budget that got cut. All of a sudden, we just told the group we didn't, we weren't gonna pay our share of the bill. This is something that we're in with the library district, we're in it with the school district, we're in it with the fire district, who I think also dropped out without board approval, and also with the park district. So this is part of our intergovernmental obligation. We should continue to be a part of it, and if we're gonna drop out, then we need to have a public meeting, discuss it as a board, and bring those other board members present if we decide to drop out of this, because this is a policy decision for the council to make. Thank you.
Alderman Toleme?
Yeah, my only, my only question would be that at some point, I would like somebody to come and explain exactly to me what this group is really doing for us. Because I'll be honest with you, I mean, I, I still don't have a clue, what are they really doing for us?
Alderman Suback?
I'll try to explain the best I can, but it's my understanding when people challenge the assessments, that this is the group that will kind of speak for the taxing bodies, and that the, the group speaks together through one attorney. So you have the attorney for the landowner, maybe industrial building saying the assessed value's too high, then this group, our group together puts our response, and so it's somebody representing us at the assessment level with the assessor's office. The lion's share who benefits from this is the school district, obviously, because they get the most of the tax bill, but they actually, they actually pay the largest portion of the fees.
Okay.
Alderman Toleme?
Yeah, one more question. Would it be possible to get some kind of a report, to get some kind of report from them on what they've done, you know, over, over the last couple of years, maybe?
Ms. Powers?
Alderman Toleme, I believe the city manager has a rather lengthy report showing how many protests have been successfully...
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Defeated?
Yes, successfully defeated. And I think it goes back four or five years. I think, I, I think the staff just didn't want to burden the package.
Well, I don't necessarily want to, could we just get like a, you know, like, okay, over the course of the last, something to the effect like, over the course of the last five years, we've had, you know, eight hundred and seventy, you know, that wanted to get their taxes reduced, and we won, you know, five of them.
Sure.
Okay? Because my understanding is that every one of these industrial businesses up here every year goes to try and get theirs...
Protest.
Protest their, their tax assessment, so, you know, and every year, they're pretty much granted. So I'd love to see what the numbers really are.
We can certainly try to get that kind of a report.
Yeah, I mean, because I don't want to see the big, the whole report, just something quick and dirty, you know?
Okay, then the question was called, there's a, a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item number six for information only. This is payroll outsourcing and its relationship to our new financial software that we are about to go up, or going out for bid for. And with that, I'll, I'll ask our Ms. Powers to bring us up to date.
Thank you Chairman Winger. As you know, we have been looking at payroll outsourcing for the last couple of months, and we have received three quotations from well-known firms who, who handle payroll outsourcing. Just to give you a little background, it's not just processing payroll anymore and paying the payroll taxes and printing the W-2 forms. All of these companies have a human resource module that goes along with their payroll processing for a fairly nominal cost. And what it allows companies and governments to do is become more paperless when it comes to keeping time and attendance records, become more paperless when it comes to employees inquiring about their available benefit time. Lots of things can be simplified in terms of supervisors approving time sheets before payroll is done. And then finally, when the, the payroll gets compiled in the human resources department, that can also be done online. Because these features seem to be quite common, we decided that we would also ask in our request for proposal on the financial accounting software, for the vendors to also bid on their payroll module. Sometimes the payroll module can be very expensive, and sometimes it doesn't do very much more than an outsourced firm would do, or it does the same thing. But we want to wait now before coming to you with decisions about this, because it's possible, because of all these advances in the human resource component, that there are modules out there within financial accounting software that we can obtain that will even be less expensive than outsourcing. So the RFPs for the accounting software are due on October twentieth, and I'll be reviewing along with department heads here for a couple of weeks each of the proposals. We'll try to come up with a, a list that's narrowed down to those we expect to have live demonstrations, and then we'll schedule those in the month of November and December, and, and hopefully be coming to council before the end of the year with some results.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Alderman Shaki?
Not on this, but Jeff, it's thirty-six degrees outside. Did somebody turn on the air conditioner in here? It's getting cold.
I don't know if John Forrest set the, the automatic timers for the winter season yet, but I can certainly talk to him about that tomorrow. I'm pretty sure he probably didn't, considering it was seventy degrees less than a week ago, and today it snowed, so we'll look into that.
No way to turn it down now?
I can turn it down now.
Appreciate it, thank you.
So that item is for information only, the payroll outsourcing, financial software review. Next item, items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, report on water billing usage discrepancies. We're targeting that for December. Item B, two thousand and five, two thousand and six audit report targeted for November ninth. Item C, tax levying and abatements targeted for November ninth. And are there any other items for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eileen, would you like a break before we go into the next one? Okay.
Okay, since the Chair and Vice Chair of Public Health and Safety, the Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Committee are not here this evening, I've volunteered to, to do it. So the first thing I'd like to do is call to order and let the records reflect that the same people are present. The next thing I have is the approval of minutes, September fourteenth, make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item we have tonight really discussed is the report and recommendation. This is the ordinance authorizing the disposal, disposal of surplus equipment from the police department. Chief, would you like to say anything on this?
This is a pretty straightforward proposed ordinance that we're looking for the committee's approval on. This would be for the sale of four surplus items that are noted on Exhibit A, and also for either found or mislaid property, which is contained in Exhibit B. With the ordinance approved, it will give us the authority to move forward and dispose of this property, which takes up room and various accounting functions in our evidence room.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the chief police memo to this committee dated October third, disposal of property for items listed in Exhibit A and Exhibits B.
A second.
Question?
Wasn't the gold bracelet in the black box, was that the mayor's that he was? No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item we have then is the report and recommendation. This is the resolution affirming new administrative directives, electronic communications, email policy for elected officials. And Mr. Murris, would you like to...
Yes, staff is just looking to stay ahead of the curve here, just as we retain city records in the building department or any other department. A lot of city emails under your wooddale.com addresses need to be also maintained. It is important to print out or archive all these emails when it's relevant to city business for public record. I've attached Appendix A to the City of Wooddale email and electronic communications policy. A bullet list is within that appendix to help you determine which emails are subject to FOIA, and in which case, we've got to either archive them or, or print them out. The Open Meetings Act was written in a time where things like listservs and instant messaging and other forms of communication, you know, wasn't thought about quite frequently. Now, with the, with the advent of those technologies, it's important for elected officials to know what is acceptable and unacceptable. In Appendix B, it talks about some of these issues. Basically, it, it just doesn't want, it doesn't allow elected officials to communicate electronically if more than a majority of a quorum is involved, so if more than three of you is involved in some kind of instant messaging chatroom or CCing on emails, that's probably not such a good idea.
What, a question to that, if we receive a letter or an email from a resident, a lot of times what will happen is everybody's name is on there. Now, all, all the aldermen's names are on there. Is that to type that subject?
Well, certainly you can't stop a resident from addressing the letter to all of you. What you can't do with that letter is get together outside of this body and discuss it.
Oh, okay, yeah, and it, yeah, okay, okay. So it's primarily, it, it really comes down to is, if you get a letter, if you want to discuss it, you have to discuss it publicly, we'd have to bring it and put it on a, an agenda.
We can discuss it with one other council member.
Okay.
But the numbers are laid out in the appendix. It's just a matter of numbers.
Okay.
So basically, what staff is recommending is just passage of a resolution, which is attached to the packets, just affirming the administrative directive with the updated appendices.
Okay. Does, does anybody have any questions regarding, has everybody had a chance to read it?
I have one question.
Alderman Suback?
You had talked about CCing everybody on an email. I don't, I would understand if, there was a chatroom of three aldermen, which is a sick thing to think about, of discussing Wooddale issues, but if, if I say I think that NAPA auto got a raw deal tonight, and I think we should allow this, and I want to, you know, and lay out figures of what other sales tax is generated from different businesses, and I do that to the city council, and I just send it to all of them, I, I don't understand how that would violate the Open Meetings Act.
Well, because you're discussing city business outside of, of public forum.
But I'm saying, but I'm not asking for any kind of response, I'm just kind of sending it out to them. I thought that when we talk about Communication, Open Meetings Act, it's, communication is a two-way street.
I think also too, if you're, you could go around that by not CCing everybody, but contacting each alderman individually.
So sending one email to each alderman at one at a time?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a way, there's a way around everything. I mean, unfortunately, it doesn't matter what you do. Okay, does anybody else have anything, questions? What I would suggest is this, if anybody does have any questions or concerns, is that you talk with, with Jeff after this meeting, or at setup of time, talk with him, I mean, if you're really unsure of something. And with saying that, I'd like to make in, make a motion to concur with the memo dated October twelfth, two thousand and six, and look for a resolution for the email electronic communications policy for the City of Wooddale Administrative Directive. Is that right?
Second.
On a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item we had is information only, this was on the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission update, and unless anybody has any questions, it appears that the homes that were put on the two thousand and four residential soundproofing insulation program are finally going to be done, or in the process of going to be done in two thousand and six. So I figure if you get on the list, it takes about two years for it to, to get done, so...
I have a question for Jeff. Jeff, I know one of your concerns that we're currently not a member of this group, and you had thought that we might not get our fair share of soundproofing. Was this a, a new list that came out, or is this an existing list?
This, this, this list of homes has been in existence for a while. This was actually created in two thousand and four, and they just started the construction in, in October two thousand and six.
Right.
So I, I wasn't around back in two thousand and four when they selected these homes.
Have you seen any list of what they selected in two thousand and five?
The two thousand, the two thousand and six selections were just recently released, and they're on a, a website that's outlined in that memo.
Okay. Did Wooddale get its, a share of that?
Wooddale did get a share of homes, but once again, that may not continue in the future, but this time, we, we did get, we did get a significant chunk of homes, if you go look at the website.
And did, did they lay out, and I haven't looked at the website, did they lay out the criteria they used for the homes? Is it your opinion, you think we could have got more homes if we were a member of this group?
You know what, I, I can't say at this time. I looked at the website for a couple of minutes, and there was quite a few Wooddale homes on there. It did not say how those homes were picked. It's pretty much just an interactive GIS mapping system, that if you type in an address, it gives a grid, and it gives homes to be finished two thousand and six, projected homes two thousand and eight, and then they're gonna be selecting the two thousand and ten homes relatively, you know, soon.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can kind of answer your question, I think. In the past, I have talked with members of the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, and I have been assured that it's not, this is one group that supposedly is not political when it comes to which homes they pick. They base it solely on the patterns, the airport patterns, and that based on where, you know, the, I forget what they call it, the decibels, okay, is where they ultimately is how they figure it out. In two thousand and five, there was no program. In two thousand and six, the list that they came out with now has one hundred and seven homes that will be contacted in Wooddale. And all the homes are in, currently under twenty-seven hours. They're in Wooddale. And what they've tried, yeah, and I just, because I've been involved with this since ninety-five, when they first started doing this, they have now basically covered the entire corridor of that, you know, like within, basically within about a two-block radius, the whole area from our border to the east, all the way now will be through to the creek. So they've pretty much addressed as, as many of them as they could.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing nothing, then items to be considered at future meetings, we have solicitors and canvassing ordinance. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Hearing nothing, like to make a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor? Aye, thank you very much.
Take a five-minute recess before starting public works.
God, is it hot in here now?
Hot stuff.
Huh? What's that? Oh, yeah. Next Thursday.
Nine-thirty. This'll go fast. He's always fast. We've got off the smoke.
You know what I don't understand? You voted to approve twelve homes subdivision over here by me, and you voted no against this one. And all these guys, Joe, all these guys in the unit was there. They needed nowhere.
Well, I, I, no, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I didn't say that. I didn't say, I said, I want to see the plans. I just, I question about, I'll say no now, until I see the plans.
No, that's, that's...
I, you know, you know, these guys come, and they say they're gonna do this, they're gonna do, and then when they, you get your plans, the plans are altogether different than what they're doing.
That's why I said, oh, with these homes that you want on the building here, Florina now.
Yes, I know, I saw that. I saw that. I saw that.
The foundation, you go to the back of their property.
I, I didn't go, I didn't go...
Go back to the back of their property. The ground level is here, here, okay? This is the ground level.
Yeah.
The foundation is almost three and a half feet.
Well, I'll, I'll show you something that you voted...
And you know why? But you know why? I voted for those. But you know why it is? Because they were able to go off of the front elevation of the property, not off of the back.
All right, I'll show you one, I'll show you one, that you could drive by, you could drive by, you can drive by on Montrose. And when you get to see there and you stop, you look north, and the, the, the foundation must be four feet above the land, and they got, and it's all got scratched on it now because the house is done, and...
Were these guys over here, Joe, they have...
I, I voted, I, I sent... I said, John over there, I sent everybody over there to look at it, to make a... And guess what?
It could do the...
It was approved. Before they even built the house. I mean, when the foundation was in, there wasn't a thing up.
Right, but because the foundation, because they were able to go off of...
Off of someplace else that is higher.
Yes.
The only thing I'm worried about, the only thing I'm worried about that, that project over there, is the flooding.
It's like any other project. When it goes into, you know, at that point where it goes into the creek, you don't make a difference.
Well...
I don't know, it just, it just drives me crazy because, yo, send the...
I, I also, I also said that I want to see the plans.
Yeah, yeah. No, I thought it was on NAPA. That was on NAPA.
I know. No, no, that was on that one too.
All right, okay, okay. All right. It's okay. It's okay.
Better. Hey, Justin, how come you didn't get into this guy that was giving all this money to the governor and you didn't get anything in there and get your name in the front page and editorial and stuff like that? You mean you didn't go after that? Boy, are you, are you a reporter.
I was getting the check from him, I wasn't gonna go after him.
I'm only teasing you to know that. Did they have... Did they, did they... According to the paper, it looks bad. It looks bad. Will it? The guy that went, the guy that disappeared?
Yeah.
The guy that went to Greece or someplace like that? You mean, what the hell is this thing? Levine? Was it Levine that disappeared? Yeah. Yeah. He's... Look, that's, that's, yeah, but did you know how much they have? Big money. Big money floating around.
Years running for the law office.
Oh, wow. He asked that one former producer to allow him to do films and save for the money. A million and a half dollars contributed to the governor. Why? That's really some nerve. Of course, them guys don't care. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. They can do anything they want. Yeah, because they got somebody paying them.
How much email do you want?
What?
How much email do you want?
How much did I mail to him?
How much email do you want?
I don't do any email. I, I'm not allowed to touch my computer in my house. My wife uses it for sewing. And if I screw something up, she, I wouldn't be able to open the house. She takes, she does all the, you know, when I, I go every night to her and I says, "Put in Wooddale and let's see what I got." In the computer. She raises it up. I answer everything that I got. And then...
She takes you back off.
She takes me back off. Sometime I have stuff, sometime I don't. I, I, I do, I do it when I, when I have something. And if I have somebody that has, you know, everybody, I always make sure I give... I try. I'm not the best, best guy in the... I, I try and check the... It'd be good to tell everybody. I won't talk to anybody over the phone.
Well, just like, you just stay out of it.
I ask them their address.
Yeah.
Their address. And I go over and talk to them personally. I want to see what the guy looks like. I want to see what his eyes look like. You can control him more if you're there. Over the phone, he can, he can be... Going off the deep end. All right. But if you're talking to him face to face, you can always quiet him down. And I thought that, that works. That works. Maybe I'm crazy, but that's, that's, that, it works. It's better to talk to him personally than to talk to... So it takes you a little longer. I don't worry about that. I don't worry about that. I just got, I just got off, get some of my stock money back. Now I can, I can, I got to float around now. You know the stock market's going crazy? I have one account right now, and I have $60,000.
The who? Have he sent me?
I don't, I don't, I don't, why, why are we talking about?
This is part of your photos?
No, no, no. So what's new? We're busy?
Yeah.
In court?
Court, everyone.
That's what you asked?
It's true. It's true. I mean, having that project's not...
Which one?
The Mount Flare.
Oh.
I got some people, I talked to Joe.
Lee, Lee.
Yeah, he loves it.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
He's like, you know. I took it away by, hey, great streak, thank you. I never meant to go so far. So Alderman Tolemy's staying, he's just like... So I'm with his jacket.
Lady next to you.
Yeah.
She's happy with the sidewalk.
Um, Libby? Yeah, he might need to shut the side door.
Wonderful. She says, curves up my straight, she said, and I'm out by myself.
Yeah.
Both sides.
Yeah.
I like the way they did the tree though.
Yeah.
I was, they saved the tree.
Yeah. It was great.
Oh, my, can he get...
At first I was like, oh my gosh, you know, look.
My wife said they should have put the sidewalk straight and then moved the tree.
Yeah, but you know what, what kind of upset me is that the city planted that tree.
Yes.
Uh, part of the, you know, in, he's gone, he'll churn. So it's all, anywhere in Murray, he should have measured.
Yeah.
He should have figured, you know...
But the cement they put down today was different than the cement they put down the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah.